I'm going to call this meeting to order. If, as you are able and willing, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. We've got a good crowd tonight. This is great. We start with our public comment. Harry, we have one, one person, I think it's Amy, or are you? Amy McCallum has signed up to deliver public comment.
Oh, I just thought I had to sign in so that I could be recorded.
Oh, no, 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 no. That's okay. In that case, we're down to no people signed up to give public comments, so we'll move directly into the report of the secretary. Have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, November 5th, 2025.
Second, Rebecca.
Rebecca, thank you. Any comments or questions?
No, we're free.
Nicely done, as always. Okay, in that case, call the favor. That is four row, and we have approved minutes. Thank you. That brings us to the report of the chair. I have a couple free meetings, a couple, three items on my list. Our next town officials' meeting will be December 10th. We had a town officials' meeting down in Elliott, got a nice tour of the, of the facility. We talked about budgets and things of that nature. I actually have my notes back there, but in interest of time, I just want to say it was a good meeting, and we talked about budgets, and we got a good tour of the, of the new facility down there, which was nice. Next meeting will be December.
Talked about voting.
Oh, we talked about voting, yes, we did. That's, that's probably important to mention, yeah. It went well in Elliott and in Southbury, so that was good. Next meeting will be December 10th, and I will coordinate attendance for whoever wants to, to be involved in that. We just now had a one-hour-long community discussion on our in-between first and second reading cellphone policy. I thought it was a fantastic meeting. We had sixty or seventy people, by my count, maybe more, in the room that came, and that was awesome to see. We got a tremendous amount of really good feedback, really thoughtful commentary, lots of good suggestions, folks expressing concerns, both for and against. It was, it was really, really heartening to hear. I really, I thought it was fantastic. Anybody else want to comment on it?
I, go ahead. I just wanted to thank the students for coming and offering your voice and hearing you out. You brought up a lot of great points and things for us to think about, and we just appreciate how courageous you are in speaking your mind and what's important to you, so thank you all for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for being here, too. It's kind of cool to see students.
I know, I love it. It's a super meeting. You're welcome, anytime.
Okay, third item, superintendent hiring process. This was intended to be, I want this to be a discussion among the four of us. We are now in a position of having to hire a superintendent, likely since we have extended our interim superintendent through the end of the school year for a July 1 start date, is my guess. We need to design a process that all of the members of the board, and I'm aware that two of our members are not with us this evening, are comfortable with because among all of the hires of the district, this is the one that the board is primarily responsible for, so I want to make sure we all agree that we have a process going forward that's fair and that's going to do the best thing for the district. So, initial thoughts is that sometime, maybe in December, we'll kick off a search. There's work that we all have to do on the job description, which we got a copy of a couple weeks ago, I think. We need to talk about an interview process and, and what community groups or groups within the school, administrators, staff, whatever, we want to involve in either the interview process or in a kind of an advisory role to our ultimate decision. I'm just freewheeling right now, thoughts of how this ought to look, based on my recollection of the last time we hired a superintendent. Any thoughts from each of you?
I mean, I think it's important, I wasn't here for the last superintendent hiring, so I, I think it would be important to kind of take a look at what that looked like and maybe, I don't know, get some input from other people, maybe other districts, or how other people do the process, and maybe we can get Heidi's input, I don't know. What do you think?
As I recall, we had a, a series of interview panels that, that involved the board. In one case, there was a second panel of administrators and some staff as well. Students were invited to give the candidates tours of the building, and that, that gave them an opportunity to get a feel for each of the candidates and to provide feedback to the board. Those are the things I'm remembering. We did do a process where we narrowed down from, if I'm remembering correctly, it was something like five candidates. We, we narrowed down to two or three for second round of interviews, and then went from there.
Do you remember, like, what did the process look like for, like, writing the questions, the interview questions? So what, what did that, was that like a, was that a workshop, or was that an executive session, or what did that look like?
My recollection is that it was a workshop.
Okay.
That we did, and we solicited inputs from, from administration and staff as well as, as to what the questions ought to look like.
Okay. Is that something we need to get the ball rolling on, like, should we schedule a workshop, maybe before December 3rd meeting, or is, or the meeting after? Like, what does the timeline?
We should, my sense is we should probably talk about in December.
Okay.
I'm imagining that we would kick off the process of soliciting candidates in, maybe in January. Does that feel right to you?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it really is, the question that I would ask is, like, by what time would we like to have someone hired, you know, and then kind of work backwards from there?
Yeah.
And I think there's timeline questions, I think there's the question of, do we want to use some sort of an outside search agency to help manage this, or are we going to do it internally? I think there's cases to be made for both. And then, to Joe's point, sort of the, the nuts and bolts of, you know, who do we want on the team? Do you want it to be one group? Do you want multiple groups? What are different people's roles? Ultimately, knowing that this is the board's hire, this is your decision. So, yeah, I, I think, I think it's important for everybody on the board to be involved.
Agreed.
It's a little different than, say, hiring a principal or, or whatever, where maybe I get a board member who wanted to help out. This is your hire, so you guys should feel very involved.
Can you talk a little bit about what an outside agency looks like as opposed to?
So the Maine School Management Association does offer a superintendent's search function.
Yep, so just wide, like, casts a wider net type of?
There's some direct mailing and direct, like, I get emails. There's a couple agencies on MSMA, and I think there's another one, I can't remember what the acronym is, but, you know, they'll, if you have an opening, they'll push it out to people who have the right certifications in the state or whatever. So that can maybe reach a different group of people than posting it on school spring or Indeed or some of the normal mechanisms we use.
Okay, can we do both?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
I've never been a part of one that's been done externally by a, by an agency, so I don't know a lot about that, but we could certainly get more information.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll contact the folks at the MSMA.
Okay.
There's a fee that they charge for that service, of course.
Okay.
I'll need to find out what that is. I'll bring that back as well.
And their net is just in Maine, I'm guessing, or no?
I, well, so the superintendent has to have a Maine certification.
Okay.
Right? So.
Joe, I'll also look at this one that I get notices from, I think it's a New England region.
Oh, okay.
Because I definitely get openings from Connecticut, Massachusetts, like, it's definitely a New England-wide thing.
Okay.
It's like a Nez, Nezcat or something, I don't know, I'll, I'll look it up.
Okay.
So, Joe, they have to have a Maine certification. Is it something that can be acquired, or does that, oh, does that process take?
You can speak to them.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a superintendent's license in another state, it really is likely not to be a super difficult process to transition to Maine. I mean, there might be, of course, here or there, that would be different, but shouldn't be hard.
I think I'm remembering that when we did this, last time we did it, that we did get candidates from other states.
So I think the first step then would be to find a date in December, to try to.
To workshop this, yeah.
Yep. And then in the meantime, we could probably look at the sample.
What is our meeting after the 3rd? The 10th, and then the 17th, it must be?
17. I don't know how, I don't have my phone on me.
And I promised myself I wouldn't look at my phone.
I know.
Does the 17th?
That sounds right, the 3rd. The 3rd and 17th?
I actually have my, let me see.
I know that.
Are board meetings in December?
The 3rd. 17.
But I can tell you.
I know Heather is not available on the 3rd, so if we could workshop at the 17th.
And both of those meeting dates are open, like, we don't have other workshops scheduled, so.
Okay.
Let's plan the 17th.
17th, okay.
Good.
And a reminder that workshops are open to the public, just no public comment.
Any other thoughts? Okay.
So if we, sorry, if we have some of those decisions made as a result of that workshop, can we talk about, like, are there some decisions that we, like, an agenda sort of sorts for that meeting? Like, are there decisions that need to come out of that workshop in order to post the position?
Like an agenda for the workshop, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe the three of us can work on that when we meet?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Let me talk agenda.
Okay.
I'll certainly bring back the information from the MSMA by then.
Okay.
Yep, great, thank you.
Good. Other thoughts? Okay, that brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Excellent, all right. So I am going to start by turning it over to Dr. Gowers and many students that are here tonight to talk to all of you and share a little presentation on Marshwood High School clubs and activity highlights.
Hello. We are, wait, slide. There you go. We are very fortunate at the high school that so much happens in our classrooms, also happens outside of our classrooms, with a number of clubs and activities that our students can participate in. This is not even, I think, a complete list of some of those, the crossover, music and athletics and advocacy and language and interest groups. So it's no better way to do things than ask our students to share some information with you about the kind of clubs we have at our school. I think we have four clubs represented this evening. I think, we don't have anyone from Hawk Buddy, because I think Renee was unwell, unfortunately. Or we could also, we can also call it Hark Buddy, if that makes it easier for you as well. But starting off, so we've got about, short amount of time, but it's, we're going to go for it. It's always great to let our high school students speak. So Olivia's going to come up, I think, first, and tell us a little bit about what the Maine High, Marshwood High School Civil Rights Team does. Flourish it.
Hello. I'm Olivia Woods. I'm a senior at Marshwood High School. I'd like to say I apologize for my appearance. It's rehearsal, and we are doing a fun night, so we're in my PJs right now. You should come see us Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The Civil Rights Team is the administered by the Attorney General. It's a civil rights team project. It's a school-based preventative program mission of the Civil Rights Team, or the CRTP, is to increase the safety of elementary, middle-level, and high school students by reducing bias-made, biased, motivated behaviors and harassment in our schools. The CRTP accomplishes this by supporting student civil rights teams in our schools. It's mandated for all high schools in Maine to have a civil rights team, and the CRTP and the civil rights teams are active in engaging in school communities and thinking and talking about issues related to our six protected categories, which are race and skin color, disabilities, national origin and ancestry, gender, including gender identity and expression, religion, and sexual orientation. We meet usually Tuesdays after school in D203, which is Ms. Brandon's room, until around 3:30. We do a lot of things, a lot of monthly things, so we do monthly activist spotlights. This November, we did Autumn Peltier. She is currently the chief water commissioner of the Ashen Shebek Nation of Ontario, Canada. She started her activism at eight years old and has spoken many times since, in, including at the UN. She has over 200,000 followers across the different social media accounts, and she uses her social media platforms to spread awareness about inequalities for Indigenous people, advocate for clean water access, and encourage youth to stand up for what matters for them. Monthly announcements, we do holidays events related to the six categories. Usually these, these revolve around what the month is about, so the month is about Indigenous Peoples' Month. We might do a announcement on Tuesday or Friday about something about the Indigenous People of Maine, or something like that. And we also have done one about Transgender Remembrance Day on November 20th. We also do a monthly bulletin board. It's in the lobby upstairs by the bathrooms. We also share information about history, holidays, current events related to the six categories, usually pertaining to the month and what the month has to offer. Some activities we've done since the beginning of the school year, we had the Day of Welcome on November 7th. The Day of Welcome is really just to make students feel accepted in their community and make sure that we welcome them to our school. We were in the main lobby and downstairs by the cafeteria. We got four boxes of 50 donuts, munchkins, from Duncan, Southbury-Duncan, donuts donated to us, and we really appreciated that. And we stand there and welcome everyone with a sweet treat. We also did signs for the exchange students with the welcome words in their language. We have a Friendsgiving event coming up on the 25th. The Civil Rights Team invited students from the Language Learning Club, Climate and Culture Club, Global Citizenship Club, and some other staff to join us that day after school to socialize and learn about each other. We also invited the exchange students to come in as well. And then our possible future initiatives, we're hoping to use a Google form we sent out last year that asked about how some teachers felt about the six protected categories and how representative they were in their classrooms, and if they had any questions, and we're hoping to do a presentation about that, maybe in the third or fourth semester, or, yeah, so. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have also clubs which are to do with challenging yourself with mathematics. So place, flourish yours, Tom.
So I wouldn't say it's really that complicated, it's just, it's just math. So, yeah, every Wednesday, we meet up and I guess we, we practice our skills, and then we go to other schools and you do, like, events, and so there's six rounds, and so there's individual rounds, and then there's a team round, so not only does it work on your own skills, but it works on team-building skills and leadership and time management, and it's, it's a good way to just, you know, go to your math, I guess.
Thank you.
It's open to anybody, right? Math teacher?
Yeah.
Thank you. Interact Club, Fiona, Julia.
Hi. So Interact Club is basically just a community service club to try to get, like, students out in the community and volunteering, and we work a lot with, like, food pantries, and we have people volunteering in hospitals, that kind of thing. So it is a student-run club. These are our officers currently. I'm one of the presidents, and she's the vice president. We do have about 30 active members who, like, come to the meetings and regularly volunteer and stuff. So in June, we went to the Strawberry Festival, just as a little fundraiser for us to get a little more money to work with, and we ended up making about $500 from our raffle and bake sale, and we actually had a lot of leftover baked goods and donated to the table with my suspicion in Berkeley. So we also went to the Elliott Festival. We made a bunch of slimes at one of our friend's houses, and the purpose of going to the Elliott Festival wasn't to raise money, but to spread awareness of what Interact is and just, I don't know, make a fun time for little kids. At Marsud, we also have a community closet across from the nurse's room. A big goal of ours this year was to maintain the closet and keep on it, keep it nice and neat. We constantly have clothes coming in, and we also have foods and school supplies for students who need them. Another project we do is working with Crossroads, and every month, well, okay, so they basically provide, like, food and lunches for people, mainly single mothers who are struggling with, like, food insecurity. So every month, so it'll be this Friday, if anyone wants to come help, we make 50 sandwich lunches with, like, a snack and some chocolate usually, and a little note. And it's just a really great way to, like, bring everyone together and also help people who need. And then also, a few weeks from now, we did the Purple Polio Project, which is based on, in countries where polio is still an issue, when someone gets their polio vaccine, like a kid, they, like, dip their pinky in purple ink to show that they've been vaccinated. So to raise money for polio, like, and polio, we paint people's pinkies, like, their nails purple in exchange for a dollar. And this time, we raised around $300 from donations and that, from teachers and students, and that's really great. So one of our latest, like, big events was To Retreat For Cans, where we basically gathered a bunch of students and we retreated around an agmeticus estates. gathered a bunch of students and we toretreated around Agamemnon's Estates. We collected more than 300 cans. Students got to get candy, dress up, and we also wanted to shout out the Rotary for picking up the trailer and donating everything so we could go home. And future projects, this is just something that we're trying to think about, it's an opportunity. I've talked to other Rotarians about this, and it's a really successful fundraiser, where basically people, in exchange for $20, they put their Christmas tree at the end of their driveway in January and pick them up, and then we bring them to a place that disposes of them properly and recycles the waste of the trees. This would be like a January fundraiser, and I think it's gonna be really successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had hoped to have Renee here, but she's unwell. But Hawk Buddies is another club we have at the high school, which is open and actually pairs with students at the elementary schools. It's a great way to be across district in those relationships, so it's actually still open for students to be involved in it. So if any students in the building would like to be interested as well, there's still time to get involved in Hawk Buddies, which is great. But lastly, our last club to talk about is about Spanish Club. Evan, thanks.
I'm Evan, I'm a junior. And Spanish Club, we try to meet on every other Monday, and attendance varies from even, like, five kids to about 15. When there's food, it's usually more people. It's trying to give an opportunity to students to learn about, like, a different culture, usually like Spanish-speaking cultures, and learn about different foods, holidays, what they do in their countries. And right now, we're working on trying to, like, review sessions for students to take a test of SEAL by Literacy or their AP Spanish test. And we've also talked about maybe coming back to Spanish National Honor Society, where we'll try to work in that maybe in January or spring. And, yeah, that's about it, just an opportunity to learn about different cultures.
Well, thank you all. Thanks for being here, and thanks for sharing some information about clubs and activities at the high school. And if you ever want to drop by to Spanish Club or Math Team or Hawk Buddies or Interact, let us know, because there's a lot of things going on in the building and outside the building as well. So, thank you again.
Thanks. Kids, it's awesome having you here, but don't feel like you have to stay if you don't want to. All right, Mr. Cormier, can you pull up that other little video for me? This is our comic relief. I'm inserting some comic relief into the board meeting today, just so you know. This came across my inbox today, and I had to share it with you. I know last week, when, I think it was two weeks ago at our last board meeting, when Dr. De'Aaron shared that the Monster Mile had raised almost $50,000. So part of what happens at the Monster Mile is, I think this was new this year, but the teachers did an inflatable race, and I just want to play it for you because it's hilarious.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. I love that it's in slow-mo.
Yes, yes. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. They got quite a collection of inflatables.
Seriously, yes.
And nobody get hurt.
No, but wait, watch the clown.
Oh, my gosh.
It's so awesome.
Oh, that's too funny. Oh, that's awesome.
All right, so 45 seconds of comic relief.
Thank you.
And obviously, huge shout-out to the Central School Team. They did such a great job with the Monster Mile and the PTO there, really fantastic. So next on my agenda is just to give you guys a glimpse into our projected enrollment for next year. You have a form in your packet. As you know, this is really the basis of the beginning of our budget discussions, so we've just barely started to have those discussions. We had a little bit of a brainstorming session at our recent board meeting, I mean, not board meeting, recent A Team meeting, and then we've started, Mr. Cormier and I have started meeting individually with building administrators and talking through their programmatic priorities as we think about building the budget. But if you look at the 2027 projections, that's really gonna give you a sense of what we're looking at, and it really looks pretty steady, right? I mean, we're projecting our total enrollment, if it's 2119 this year, we're projecting 2113 for 2027. So on a par with where we've been, lucky, we haven't seen any big spikes one way or the other. We've seen some movement in different grade levels, in different cohorts, but as we get closer and start building our class, you know, using our class sizes to build the number of sections that we need, we'll keep you guys in the loop on that. I just wanted you to have this information going forward.
Thank you.
Yes, next on my agenda is just a quick verification of the January 21st board meeting. I needed to move that meeting, and I believe the board has agreed to move it to January 14th.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So we will make that change in our documents. I also shared that with Superintendent Lori Lane from Rollinsford, because we're trying to get a Rollinsford collaborative meeting scheduled for sometime in January or early February. I gave her that 14th date, but also said if that didn't work for their board, that we could look at one of our two February dates as a possibility.
Great.
Okay?
Good.
And next, I will share that I got notice from Colleen Carson, who is an elementary school teacher at Elliott Elementary, that she will be retiring at the end of this year. So certainly appreciate all of Colleen's service and sad to see her go, but wish her the best, of course. So just wanted to share that with all of you. And I will turn it over to Zora.
Okay, thank you. Kavery wasn't able to make it tonight, so I think that she's gonna send me a video going forward, but I can read off of her section if necessary. Just give me a moment. Okay. So winter sports had begun, I think, as of this Monday, and I think that's the biggest thing that we have in sports so far. And then extracurriculars, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory had their opening show last Friday night, and it will run until November 22nd. And for Student Gov, we have a lot of interesting and fun announcements. We finally got in Policy together. Here, let me open the whole, here we go. We finally got in Policy and Wellness and Student Life, all the committees together, so they had a lot of great discussions, and I got to be there and take notes. For Policy, they discussed advisory time a lot and phone use, because that's a, like, very pressing issue. They also talked about exam policies and SAC pass and kind of what SAC pass would mean to students, if anything, now. And I think there's a lot of discussion that, once it's not tied to phone use anymore, it will kind of not be, like, meaningless, but it'll be a lot less of something that kids strive for. And I heard from a lot of students that they felt that enrollment, or not enrollment, that attendance might actually drop because of that, because I know a lot of students who the reason that they come to school and, like, consistently is because they're aiming for that SAC pass. And Wellness got to work on the Winter Carnival and planning that out, so that was interesting. And Student Life got to talk about, also kind of like the winter activities that we have. And then I'd really love to spend some of my time talking about the phone, like, policy and everything, because I think it's part of my job to fully represent the classes, especially with Kavery not here as well. I think, I'm just gonna kind of rephrase a lot of what was said, but, hold on, I have a lot of different notes and things. I think that one of the ideas that was brought up was mental health is a huge issue and that it was tied to bone use, but at least when it comes to bullying, most of the bullying that has been seen by students here, and I know that one of the students who actually spoke today, she's experienced some of that, and she felt that, like, most of it, if not all of it, has been actually in person. And I've definitely seen some instances where there's a bit of disregard for some of the, the, I'm trying to, I think there's a bit of disregard from administration or teachers at times when it comes to, like, the little things that don't always count as bullying, or like, some, like, remarks that are, like, a little provocative but not necessarily outwardly rude. And actually, we had an instance today that a lot of people and some students might be able to agree. A student actually wore an ICE shirt today in support of ICE, which I think was an interesting choice. And I think, I think that if we want to go into mental health, there's a lot of other outlets that should be addressed as well, and it should certainly not just be phone use, because there's so much interaction outside of phone use. And most of the interaction that's negative related to phone use does tend to be at home or on social media, which I don't think is as easy to control. I think another student concern was that, was the standard of educators having their phones and then students not being able to have their phones in a crisis. And obviously, teachers have to have their phones, they have to be able to communicate with people, it's really important for teachers to have their phones, but the students seemed that, it felt like as we move into the age where we're becoming adults, that they kind of have to take responsibility for their own body in the way that the educators kind of have to take someone's responsibility. And then another issue was, and I've talked to, actually, my teachers about this, I'm in four AP classes at the moment, and every time I get onto AP classroom, and I know there's a lot of other college systems like this, you have to use your verification through your phone. And so that's like, I have four classes, so that's at least like two times a day, each day. And that means that I, like, have to text, because it's linked to my phone, because it's not a, it's not directly through Marshwood. So then I have to be texting my phone, I have to go get it unlocked from wherever the lockers or the pouches are, and then put it back in. And I think that would be something that should definitely get worked out or kind of talked about. And then the biggest thing that I think is important to me, at least as a representative, is that students feel like with such a quick rollout, there isn't any time for students to respond or contribute to the discussion. And I think a lot of people said that they felt this decision had already been made, even kind of going into this meeting. And it made participation feel kind of pointless to a lot of people. And I don't think that that's really representative of how Marshwood, like, feels about their students. And I know that the teachers and the people here all really want to feel like their students can be active members of the community, especially when we're becoming adults. I know that they want to prepare us to learn as much as we can while we're here and go out and be as successful as we can, and citizenship is really, really important to that as well. And I believe giving students the opportunity in class, or not even in class, like, in, like, I don't know what you're saying, like, an open, kind of like we did tonight, but during school hours would be really beneficial in developing kind of well-rounded adults and, yeah, active members of the community.
Thank you, Zora.
Do you have a question, if I can?
Yeah.
You mentioned the AP classroom verification via phone. When I was in high school, we were using stone tablets and chisels. Do they offer an option to verify via email?
Yeah, but they do not let you use your school email, because the AP, I don't know if some of you might be parents, but AP is connected to, like, the school board, and so you're not gonna have access to the scores if you use an account that's directly linked to your, to your school account, because Marshwood students do not have access to their Gmail after they graduate, and these are scores that you'd need to kind of continue to be able to send them to colleges. So all of our information for AP classroom and for college classrooms as well, for, like, I think UMaine is all linked to different email, and a lot of times, that email is also on your phone, so it's either linked to your phone number or to an email that's not on your school laptop, or it might be on, if it's a personal device.
So you need access to your personal email on your school laptop?
You need to be able to add your personal email. Yeah, and that's currently something that I think a lot of students feel like is a little bit difficult and like a barrier to.
Okay. Thank you. Understood. Yes.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you so much.
And Zora, this is like, the student voice stuff that we want to hear, like, we want to hear this in our meetings. This is like, so good. Even if, even if the outcome isn't 100% what you want, we want to hear this and take all of these things into consideration, so thank you. Are you good, Zora?
Yes.
Thank you. Great. That concludes my report.
Okay, great. We didn't receive any correspondence on which to report. We'll talk about committees next. Finance and Facilities was scheduled to meet earlier this evening, but with the having to move around and all the logistics involved, we decided to postpone the meeting. We did get a report from Ryan, the FNF Committee did get a report from Ryan today with the district numbers for the month of October, and they all look good, the cash balance is still good, everything is flowing the way it should flow. And we will next meet December 17th, and we'll have a two-month report at that time. Education Policy is going to meet tomorrow during the day, I can't remember exactly what time.
11:30.
It's in my calendar, 11:30, to take in all of the input that we got tonight from Zora and from everybody in the meeting down the hall, and to have another go at the policy. And hopefully, that will result in us bringing it to a second read at the December 3 meeting, so that's the plan there.
So glad that I saw that, because I had one o'clock, because that's all of our time, so I would have been.
Oh, that's funny, yes.
And Wellness and SEL will next meet on December 3, in advance of the December 3 board meeting. So that wraps up our standing committees and brings us to new business. First motion is regard to a temporary appointment. Have a motion on that, please.
I move to approve the temporary appointment of Sarah Alice to the position of halftime curriculum director and title coordinator for the term of December 1, 2025, which ends 30 of 2026 with an administrative stipend in the amount of $15,000.
Second, Rebecca.
Second, Rebecca, thank you.
So, as we've been talking about, I have been able to find some help, which is great. So I posted this temporary curriculum position for the remainder of the school year and was fortunate enough that two of our fabulous instructional coaches and interventionists expressed interest, Sarah being one of them. So Sarah is currently the literacy coach and interventionist at Great Works School, and she has done her administrative internship with Mr. Vurnell and has kind of been interested in taking on administrative role. And so she was really excited to try this out and see if it's something that she likes. And I'll say similar things about Katie when we get to Katie. But Sarah has her master's in Ed Leadership in Applied Literacy, she has two master's degrees, and is a certified literacy coach. She has been with us for a while, and I just think she's gonna bring great ideas and great leadership to the position. Very excited. Great.
Comments or questions? All in favor? That's for real. Thank you, Sarah. Motion, please, with regard to the second temporary appointment.
I move to approve the temporary appointment of Katie Gilpatrick to the position of halftime curriculum director and affirmative action officer for the term of December 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, with an administrative stipend in the amount of $15,000.
Kate, very good.
So similarly, Katie is currently the bar coordinator and a literacy interventionist at Marshwood Middle School. She has also been exploring the possibility of potential
with Ms. Early Hershey in her role now as interim superintendent through June 30th, that this is her position as curriculum director and title line coordinator. That's where this is coming from, just to clarify.
And affirmative action. Yes. And I'm, actually, Sarah and Katie are both going to Drummond and Woodsum on Tuesday right before Thanksgiving break to be trained in affirmative action and Title IX investigations. So, they'll be fully trained before they start.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Okay, that's the end of our new business section. Brings us to building administrator check-in.
Okay. So, our bottle drive to give you an update, Mrs. Eisner's sixth grade advisory won the pizza party. They, the whole school raised nearly $400 for student activities. So, we're really excited about that for our first time out. So, our goal for next time will be $500. We're really excited that our chronic absenteeism from this time last year was 11.1% and is down to 7.8%. So, we're very excited about our work and we created a attendance committee and we're really working hard on that and we're seeing the benefits. Our parent conferences are currently underway and families are coming in with strong participation. So, we're excited about that. I don't know if Mr. Burnell already mentioned it, I'm sure he did, that his PTO and our lack of PTO have merged thanks to Angie Marshall, who has put a lot of work into this. She has, no one asked her, she just did it on her own. And we've combined PTOs and it is now called Marshwoods Growing Hawks PTO. And it's one together and they've already just come out of the gate, just, they've supported our Veterans Day, our Halloween Bash, our parent conferences, Day of the Dead, and so much more. They have just, have been amazing. School events that have happened, again, the Veterans Day, Halloween Bash, eighth grade dance. We want to thank all the volunteers, the parent volunteers, our staff and the custodial staff for just cleaning up after all of that. I don't even know how they stand us, to be honest. And then we're on our way and already talking about our wellness summit for the end of the year, so we're getting those things rolling. We just had a food drive and we collected just about 580 pounds of food that we donated to Food Pantry. So, we're really proud of that. I think I mentioned that I have, I'm participating in educational leader experience with 25 other leaders throughout Maine and we are going through to different counties throughout, through Educate Maine. And our last adventure was at Oxford County. And we got to tour Hancock Lumber, KBS Builders and got to see how modular homes were created, Maine Mineral and Gem Museum and Van Crock Contracting. So, we got to see those huge cranes. And the whole point of this is to see career base and where our students can get some of these, go into these careers. And I was able to bring back an educational correspondence. She comes in from the Maine Mineral and Gem partnership. She brings free hands-on lessons to students and staff. And so, she's, my staff has already reached out to her. She's going to be bringing in lessons for free. And she drives and everything from Oxford County. Some of the curriculum highlights she goes over is basic geology, fossils, Big Bang Theory, meteorites, granites, all that stuff. So, my sixth grade team has already reached out to her for her to come back into our school and to do some hands-on activities and bring the museum to us. So, we're really excited about that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More from the high school. Well, my thanks again to all the students that came this evening and not just this meeting, but the previous meeting and as Zora said, for using their voice. That's where we want students to be, as active citizens. So, we always appreciate that. So, my thanks again to our students. It's been a week where our students have also been integral to what's been going on. As you may or may not know, today ended our NIASC visit. So, for the past three days, we had seven fellow educators from across the states of Maine and New Hampshire and Massachusetts who met with our faculty, met with our students, met with our administrators, met with our board to get a sense of where we are in our journey. So, my thanks entirely to the community who were a part of that experience. They left us today with some thoughts. They're going to come back properly, the report, sorry, will come back properly in December and then formally will come back to us, not actually until March because of how the NIASC process works. But I can certainly share with you just how much the chair and her team enjoyed firstly meeting with our students. It's no secret that if you let Marshwood students talk, it's a really good way to represent our community. And they were just incredibly impressed by the, not only the articulate, the articulate students that they met with, just their passion, what's happening inside the building and outside the building. So, that was a wonderful thing, as well as the committee's sense of the positive school community that we have here. So, I think what they saw was we have developed this vision of the graduate, which is such a huge amount of work. And now, our job is to embed it. And that's a huge thing we all get to work on together. But I think just particularly to the steering committee of Oceana and Josh and Vinnie and Matt and Tristan, who did so much work over the past. Well, actually, essentially, this annual visit took 14 years because the Marshwood, we like to do things differently. So, it's been a heck of a journey to get to this point. But just, it's been great to have that process done and just really exciting to actually have our school welcome folks and actually get a sense that they see what we see, which is a great school community. And particularly for those educators who came across from those states, one of whom had a five-hour journey home because it's Maine. And her journey home involves a ferry. So, that's a heck of a thing for anybody to do. So, it's always great to, that sense of community involvement for educators as well. Otherwise, at school, we began Q2 last week, which means classes continue. What's been happening in those classes is varied as the committee attested to as well. We had cake decorating classes in Mrs. Laylos's class, which I absolutely had to go and be a part of the judging for that. We had a photography classes, Ms. Dow's ghost photography classes, which had some very creative solutions in the building and on top of the building as where ghosts might be located. Mrs. Crowley's AP statistics class had a Barbie bungee jump contest, which is essentially a statistical modeling class, trying to work out if your Barbie could be dropped from eight meters and would it touch the ground or not? No Barbies were hurt. They were on the safe. Mr. Edgar's class were doing some really interesting debates. They were debating animal testing and whether or not we should or shouldn't be testing on animals. So, I think as the committee saw, as we see when you walk around the building, the vibrancy of what's happening in our classes. As Zora mentioned as well, I had a chance to meet with the student government folks and we're trying to get some sense immediately of maybe we can do something on the 22nd of December, maybe through an advisory, an extended advisory, just to add a bit of spirit to the community. That's a huge part of what the students know we're talking about, was how we can make a strong community here. So, maybe we can find a way to bring some holiday cheer or holiday contest before we all head off for our holiday break. Lastly, I just wanted to say, well, two last things. One, we're still closing on the end of Operation 6-7. If you didn't know, juniors, seniors, freshmen and sophomore classes have all been charged with collecting 67 items for each class, which are jarred and canned foods, which ultimately will donate to local food banks. And so, we're nearly there, but we have a 268 target, obviously. And we have until Friday to finish it out. So, if you have a student in the schools and you want to give them a can of something to bring into the schools, we can get that over to local food banks next week, which is really great. It's really great that our school's doing that. Thank you to Kelly Corrali for heading that up in her advisory class. And lastly, I just wanted to, you know, I'm fortunately going to be visiting Sanford Regional Tactical Center on Friday, which is great because the culinary students there put on breakfast and I get to have that as well. But we have about 90 students from our school that go to Sanford. So, a chance for me and I think Kyle, our counselor's going as well, to see that place and see what our students are accessing and get even more of a sense of the opportunities that are open for our students. So, I'm fortunate to be going there as well. But that's life in the high school. So, thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you.
I did want to mention, you didn't get the presentation on Hawk Buddies, but every time the elementary principals come here and they rave about that program and how much the kids in the lower grades love that.
Yeah, that's a great program. Still some space for students to join in and do that.
Oh, great. Who do they contact if they, whoever the advisor is?
Kyle.
Okay.
Kyle Salteen is the counselor.
And what grade is that? What grades are they? Is it juniors and seniors?
Okay. Do students need to have their own transportation to get? Okay, yes, okay.
Which is probably why juniors and seniors.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other last comments from the board? I'm going to ask for a motion then to enter into executive session.
I move to enter into an executive session for the purpose of consultation between MSAD 35 School Board and its attorney pursuant to 1 MRSA subsection 4056E.
Second, Jen.
Jen, thank you. Okay, thank you all for coming. We are in executive session.
Thank you.
As of 7:59. Have a good night, everyone.